Welcome, everybody, to our first council meeting in 2015. I hope everybody had good holidays. We'll start by calling this meeting to order, and we'll start with a moment of silence to observe, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wheaton.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers' comments this evening, are there any? I'd like to wish Andy French a happy birthday today.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no, no singing required, thanks, Bill.
If there are no further comments, we'll move on. We have one, two, three that are all going to be done by Elizabeth Schultes. The Bohm Historical Preservation Project and the presentation of a check in the public hearing. I will open after she explains the CDBG grant, which is the first one she's going to do on the historicals. So, welcome, Elizabeth Schultes from the Albion Community Foundation.
Thank you, thank you, and Happy New Year, everybody. I'm pleased to be here tonight to, I guess, officially close out our community development block grant, the second one we received for blight elimination. So, this means we've officially eliminated all blight at the Bohm Theater. If you're not aware, it is open and functioning and showing movies and other events, so if you haven't come down, please do. One of the big purposes of closing out the public hearing is to announce to the public how much was actually spent on the project. So, if you'll remember, this was a grant where we actually originally were awarded $360,000, and then came back later to ask for additional funds and were awarded an additional $40,000 because the budget had come in so much more than we initially had anticipated. So, on this phase of the project that does not include the work that was done to the exterior or our planning studies or any of those things, our local private match, not local government, but local community and elsewhere match, was $2,155,608 to leverage the $400,000. And they like to know that because it shows that the money that they're using from the federal government is leveraging a lot, a lot, a lot of private funds. So, we are pleased to report that we successfully met the requirement they had and actually exceeded it a little by adding a few extra things. So, the majority of the construction is done on the theater. Anything else we might do would be what we consider amenities. For instance, if we were to ever restore the organ, so, anybody out there with a check for a quarter of a million dollars, burning a hole in your pocket, that's what we would need to do that. Or, we've just received two grants recently, one from the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs and the other from Belle Creek Community Foundation and the Calhoun County Arts Council to add sound and lighting equipment for any of you who've been into the live events. It's much needed, a little dark on this stage without a spotlight. I'd also like to invite anybody in the community to come out, if you haven't been there, for the community slash Albion College MLK convocation, which is going to be held there, I believe, on January 27th. And I believe Ruth Holland Scott is going to be the main featured presentation that night, so hopefully we have enough room with the 400 seats for it. So, thank you very much. I think that's all I have unless people have questions on that. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. Will we have a spotlight for that event?
I actually emailed the lighting company today and said, "We have an event on this date and we would like it before then," so we are trying very hard to make that a reality. Otherwise, we may have to work with the Ford Institute for them to rent it.
Didn't your invitation say bring a flashlight?
But, yes, we, the grant monies couldn't be spent until January 1st, so...
Right.
Obviously, being the first day back in the office, it was the first thing on my agenda was to try and order that lighting so we would have light for the event, but there will be light. I just don't know if it'll be light we own or light we rent.
Right, right, thank you.
And if I can, you've done an outstanding job with the Bohm, Elizabeth. It's very beautiful in there. It takes me back a long ways, and like I said, I appreciate the seats, other than they are a little comfortable. I could fall asleep in one because they do rock, but if you haven't been there, go see it, it is fantastic. You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your support over the last four years.
Would you like to just go on to your next presentation?
Let's go on to the next one. So, I'll grab it in a second. My second hit, also under the Albion Community Foundation, is I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present a check to the city to support the restoration of Holland Park and the addition of playground equipment. We were fortunate to receive some additional funds at the end of this year when the Community Foundation Alliance of Calhoun County dissolved. Each of the community foundations that were partners received funding. We received approximately $50,000 to be re-granted for positive youth development activities, and we're using that, those funds. We wanted to do something that supported public entities that was going to be around for a long time, so we thought in infrastructure improvement, so we're actually awarding grants to both the Holland Park project for playground equipment as well as to Albion Community School for their playgrounds. So, we felt anything that could help our youth and help them for many years to come and improve the infrastructure of the community would be money well spent. So, the money is actually, again, as I said, a bonus money, which means we still have the normal amount of money that we normally have to re-grant to the community, so certainly opportunities to support many other programs, but we just really loved both of these activities. The community foundation over 45 years ago was founded as the Albion Civic Foundation with a priority to support arts, culture, recreation, and education, and we feel Holland Park in particular, it has, it's going to have an education piece, it has the cultural history piece to it as well as the recreation. So, we're just very honored to be a part of this and very excited that Len Reed, as well as many of her partners and collaborators in the community, took this initiative on. It's something we've been looking at for a while, but it seemed like it was over our capacity to do, so we're glad to be able to just let somebody else do the heavy lifting, and the heaviest thing I'll lift is this check.
That won't fit through the drive-thru.
No. No, we have to be careful.
The pneumatic tube.
Most of them stay non-negotiable at the bottom. I'm like, I wonder if anybody's ever...
I'm sure somebody has.
Thank you very much. We want to say thank you. We've got another part from up there. Thank you.
Well, we thank you as well. Thank you very much.
I'm not sure if we can read the amount, it's $20,000. Couldn't read the...
I was going to do that, and I thought, eh, if I said that, and it's not. Thanks again, Elizabeth. The next part is the public hearing, which she explained in Part A of the Bohm Historical Preservation, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing right now for the citizens' comments, if anybody has any. The public hearing is now open. Citizens' comments, if there's any citizens' comments on the Bohm Historical Preservation Project, please come forward with your name and address and your comment. I close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or...? Yes, Andy?
Just a follow-up. You had mentioned that, excuse me, you had mentioned that the organ is one of the projects that you're thinking about, lighting and sound, not, lighting equipment for performances. What else is left in terms of, if someone in Albion were to win the lottery this week, what else is on the list in sort of restoring it to its...
One of the, you know, there would be an additional heating unit that we could have for the stage.
Okay.
Really, actually, more for the air conditioning part because we have the lighting, it gets hot, but then again, we're using LED lighting, so it won't get...
As hot.
As hot, in theory. There aren't dressing rooms right now, so that's a real challenge, I think. I mean, I have my own dreams of expanding maybe to a building next door that I might occupy myself currently and, you know, adding a second...
A green room or something.
You know, adding a second screen would be wonderful in the future so that we could have more variety of offerings. The studios are not the easiest entities to work with, and most people who don't like that we replay things like The Hobbit for three weeks don't blame us, blame them, that kind of thing. So, if we did that, we might be able to add dressing rooms or something like that. So, a lot of it has to do with what we might want to do with the stage with rigging, so if you wanted to do theater with props, again, that's a 70-foot fly loft. It means you have to have something that will lift things into the ceiling, and if you're going to do that, you'd want to go electronic, and then you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, you know, the core things are there. Actually, really exciting, any of you who know Sherry Grace's Creative and Expressive Arts 4H program, she worked with Kathy Fisher, who took over her position, and they were just awarded a $17,000 McCaca Grant to continue that program, so we're going to be the host site for that program over the summer months. So, they don't, kids design and they do everything, so they don't necessarily, they don't do props or need big sets or big changes of clothes, that's just not how that program runs, so it's an ideal program for us to do theater because they don't need rigging for what they're going to do. But if we were to want to expand and maybe do more with Albion Youth Theater, who brings in Missoula, and they're big into doing props and those kinds of things, we might need to improve our infrastructure to do that. But again, mostly, it's kind of this equipment. We had cut this $250,000 equipment budget out because we knew we could kind of slowly add it in and build our capacity as we go.
Right. Thank you so much.
Yes, Bill.
Just a couple of comments. Money was well spent throughout that whole project, and I was, unlike the mayor here, I come back from a long time ago, and I just walked in there and I could just see my past come back, and my sister used to usher in there, and she's just so anxious to go back and see it, and I thought, you just come home and come back here, you're in Albion, and we'll take you down there, and you'll be amazed at what you see. One thing, one question I have, is the lights, are lights supposed to flash sequential?
On the marquee? They used to. We did not add that in because, one, when we did timing for everything, when it came to the marquee, we always seemed to be behind the eight ball, and we would have had to have come to Planning Commission to get permission for all of that, so... And to be honest, we thought that we had it programmed so that we could do that when we did the original, the part that says Bohm, and we didn't find out until we were hooking everything up, because that was up a couple of years before we hooked it up, that they actually hadn't wired it in a way that it could do sequences. So, we thought we had, but apparently we must have cut it from the budget for some sort of reason. So, I apologize for that. That was an oversight on our part, and now it's a little too late.
That's the only thing I see personally that doesn't, it's not actual, you know.
I guess, kind of going, the marquee piece and going on to Andrew's, if anyone wins the lottery and wants to send some money our way, the lower marquee was reconstructed in a manner that we could pop in digital display signage, so you can get full color signage so that it looks like it's white, a white background with a black lettering, and I think that was like an extra $70,000 or $80,000 in cost, but they built the cabinets so we could pull out what's there and put that in. And right now, the staff would love it if somebody wanted to try and fund that because they're out there with hair dryers on the poles, trying to melt the ice that has frozen the letters in when we've had these rainstorms. So, right now, if you drive by, the showtimes aren't on the marquee, and that would be why. So, they were out Sunday night late in the blistering weather trying to fix it, and we're going to work on it again some more this week, so...
Was that tall ladder still available?
Well, there's a tall ladder at our building they could use, but that's, I don't know if, well, I wouldn't climb up it, so I don't know if they would, so...
It was a tall step ladder.
So, or we could borrow Scott's. I like that, I liked that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, getting back to the agenda, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper protocol and decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on this, tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes for December 15th, 2014?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the debate. A, approval memorandum of understanding, holding in or distribution funds for nonprofit organization and fee schedule.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
Would you like a brief overview?
I can do that, please.
Okay. What you have before you is a memorandum of understanding, as you are aware, many of the nonprofit organizations are utilizing our resources relative to their banking, basically, for taking in their donations as well as paying for the bills associated with their operations. So, we wanted to formalize that agreement, so what you have before you is the agreement that outlines specifically what are their responsibilities and accountability and the disclaimer to hold the city harmless, and one of the important features was to identify who is the appropriate party from the organizations that can authorize their expenditures. And on the next page, we were trying to come up with a rate that was reasonable to compensate the city's staff for their time, but that wasn't so cumbersome to the organizations because they are nonprofit organizations, so we didn't want to make it too cumbersome for them. So, we based it on the number of transactions over a period of six months, so if it's less than six transactions, that would be deposits as well as payments, it would be $20, and then going up from there, as you see identified. And it was reviewed thoroughly with the Finance Director, Tom Mead, as well as with our council, Colin Harkness.
So now, the organizations that we currently, that we're the fiduciary agents for, are they going to sign on?
If you approve, then we'll be presenting it to them.
Further questions? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Reed, discussion of City Board applications?
I asked that to be on the item. I was asking for a discussion of the board applications so we can get a clear and concise application, and that the application process would be transparent, not that transparency is secrecy, transparency is just having things clear and concise and presenting the information. All of it has been taken care of from my point of view because the city manager wrote out a new City of Albion Boards and Commissions Policy and Procedures. It was revised 11/20/2014. We all received them in our packets. The only thing that I would ask, because it's only an internal document, bullet point number four reads, "A copy of the list of applicants will be provided to the mayor and city manager as it is updated." I would ask that the council come behind the mayor and also be provided with a copy as it's updated. When I met with Ms. Domingo earlier, she had already down-pat in an Excel form. She just plug it in, comes out of her computer, and you can see who has applied. I've had a couple of people, as I stated at the last meeting, stated, "Applications never came through," and Ms. Domingo was just now starting to handle this situation, and we discovered prior to her receiving it that we don't know what happened to the applications. Also, concerning the boards, I was asking that council consider requesting quarterly reports, specifically from the Planning Commission and the Downtown Development Authority. Concerning the Planning Commission, we are by law required to submit a master plan, we'll work on it every five years. I contacted the attorney today, and he corrected me because I thought it was 10 years. As a member of the Planning Commission, we were working on it, and we had some subcommittees concerning it also. And with Albion being in this new transformation period, you know, with the college and giving students free access if they go to public schools, new businesses such as the hotel coming, I would like to see that our boards are clear and concise. I'm asking that, because they are public entities, that the boards PDF their minutes to the city clerk so we can hold those for record, and that the PDFs be electronically sent to the council, or we can have them hard copied in our packets.
Yes.
So, I think the policy and procedures thing is a good idea. I don't know, is this listed as a discussion? Yeah, discussion. That might be something that council probably needs to just approve, but I think that's a good idea. I think it makes sense, and, yeah.
Yes, Andy?
I like the idea of being notified of things and having access to things. The minutes for all the commissions, the Planning Commission, everything, they're public knowledge already, correct?
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of whether or not we have access to them and easy access to them, so I think I support Councilman Barnes's suggestion that we be at least notified. I don't know what the policy and procedures were in place in terms of board commissions appointments. I was under the impression that it was basically the mayor's, one of the things that the mayor does get to do as mayor is get to appoint people to boards and commissions, so I wondered the necessity of seeing every name of every applicant, but again, in the interest of transparency, I think I would support that. I don't think I would take any action on it, right? I mean, it's one of the powers that the mayor has, as the elected head of our government, so... But it also gets to a larger...
Did they come to you for approval anyway?
No, exactly, exactly. That's exactly my point, right? So, we don't approve those positions. We are informed of them, and we, actually, we do get to approve some, but have we ever not?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah.
And you get the applications.
Yeah.
Right. Right, right. We get the applications of not all the people, but of the people that we, that you're nominating.
Yeah.
So, and I guess I'm good with that, so, yeah. But it also begets, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It also begets the question about, a larger question, which is where that information's available, and that's a website discussion.
That was going to be my next comment, was, "I don't think we ought to be doing any more hard copies unless we absolutely need to. I think having them posted electronically somewhere makes so much more sense."
Right, right.
I just, I just think sometimes that those are, if it happens to be a position that, you know, is a concern of mine, I certainly would like to see the nominee names, but I don't have to see them for, you know, I mean, if there was only one person, I'm going to get that anyway, so...
Right, right.
I, like I said, I think we need to look at electronic way of doing that. I don't want any more paper. Thank you.
Yes, first.
Well, Councilman French really made my point. The charter calls for the mayor to make the appointment with the approval of council.
Right.
My only concern was that, we usually rubber stamp those appointments. I have no problem with that. However, if I have constituents who are stating that, Councilman Barnes, what happened to my application? So, when two of them come to me personally, and I had forwarded the information that the mayor said give them a call, one did call the mayor, and I guess they worked some things out for the future. I just think that we should be able to have access to the pool of applicants.
Right.
And if I have a question or a concern when the nomination come, I'd be in a better position to ask. This was all, this was no throwing of stone or nothing like this, it's just that we have, I've been on several boards, and I'm seeing that we have a lot of situations where the city wasn't in the loop. The Albion District Library is a district library, it's not 100% a city library, so therefore, we need to touch base with them concerning the minutes and some of the actions there because the school system is involved. I'm so happy that we're in the direction that Albion is taking, and I just want to make sure that with us being under a positive microscope throughout the state with some of the things we're doing, that we cover some of the small business items that we should be taking care of.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We'll move on to see, session of 2015 goal process.
I think I asked for that to be on, this was just, if we can set a date now, great, if not, you know, yeah, it's, it's almost right there. But, yeah, just to have a, kind of an extended thing out of the, coming out of the budget time to kind of talk about what we want to focus on this year, so just maybe kind of think about when we want to do that. I think last time we did it in, was it February, or was it?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Yeah.
And I can't remember what year it was, but weren't we at the Ismen House?
Yeah.
But I can't remember if it was last year or two years ago, I, they all sort of melded together.
Yeah, I think it was Ismen House.
The last one we did.
Right. That was like two years ago.
It was two years ago.
Yeah.
But we've had so many changes in the process, you know.
A little bit.
We were still trying to get caught up on the first ones that we did, and we just kept kind of moving them down the line, so we really haven't got a lot of them accomplished, so, you know, we can probably pick for what we have to get started with.
Yeah, and I think long term, I think something that, when Kevin was here, he made a comment about, you know, I think in the past, they did it, I think, in like August because the budget was coming up, so you could align your financial plan with your other plans. So, I mean, maybe we have another one, but I think it might be good just to have that kind of discussion earlier.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to have a goal session, at least so our city manager can be evaluated in March?
February.
February. So, we set some goals relative to her evaluation.
Okay.
But I think, I agree with you, Councilman Brown, because we need to make this a sort of an ongoing part of our routine, right? If we, every quarter, we start talking about goals and things so that when, August, because you're absolutely right, Garrett, that if we can align goals with budget planning, and we haven't done that in the four years that I've been on council, I think that's going to help us do our planning better, and so I would suggest, and maybe this is a proposal, but I would suggest that we have, we plan a goal session in February, just like we've done in the past, and we start with the goals that we gave our city manager when she was hired, and then as we think about those and we think about the changes that are happening in the city and things that are happening in Lansing, things that are happening in the federal level, we can start creating some new ones, tweaking the old ones, and so that when... And so, so I would suggest, and maybe this is a proposal, but I would suggest that we have, we plan a goal session in February, just like we've done in the past. And we start with the goals that we gave our city manager when she was hired. And then, as we think about those and we think about the changes that are happening in the city and things that are happening in Lansing, things that are happening in the federal level, we can start creating some new ones, tweaking the old ones, and so that when we, and if we do that in February, we come through our assessment of our city manager, we'll be in shape so that we get together in June or July, slow time of our calendar where we could do another sort of goal session in advance of our budget processing in August and September.
Yeah.
So, do I, so can make that a formal proposal? Do we have to modify the agenda or do we just bring that up to the next meeting to set the meeting?
Yeah, we can.
What's your pleasure?
Probably just next meeting and-
Okay, okay.
If I could ask, are those goal setting sessions facilitated or are they conversational or how do you approach?
So, what we did two years ago is we had directors, we had the EDC director, we had DDA.
All the units.
We had all the vice presidents, public safety and facilities and all, and they came, sorry, not facilities.
Director heads.
Director of Public Services. And they presented what their goals were for the year and how they were planning on implementing them. And then that gave us things to sort of think about to begin the prioritization process as we were thinking about moving forward, so. And yes, in the past, it has been facilitated by the city manager.
Good idea.
You think?
Holland Park update, council member Reed. We already know you're 20,000 Richard, so. We already know you're 20,000 Richard.
Yes. I like this. But I kind of got-
Your mic.
From last meeting. It's known a lot about what was going on because I see people in the audience talking back and forth with each other and it seems as though they didn't really know what was being done. So, I thought I'd like to take this opportunity since we just got another $20,000 to go back over what it is we're doing. Holland Park is one of the city parks here in Albion and it's at the west end of Cass Street, right across the street from the senior citizens building. And that park has been vacant of a lot of things since 1976. Six pieces was put on in 1976, nothing else was put on it. It used to be the home of the West Ward School and then it was torn down and since then, nothing has been on it, it's been vacant. So, we are in the process, I retired and let Mr. Bonner know that I was retiring and Mr. Bonner showed up. This is the day I retired and said, "Well, you can get started on West Ward Park now." And I said, "Okay." And so, I've been doing that. There's a committee, Wes and Les Dick, Albion College, Jess Roberts from Albion College, Mr. Bonner, Jerome Washington, Bobby Wall, Dr. Mitchell, and Tori, and myself, and Marilyn Hinton has asked to, Henson has asked to be on there. But we've been meeting with companies and going through books and looking up stuff to do this park with, and it's just really been amazing. And the more we work on, the more we come up with. So, I just kind of, I know we had one downstairs, but I tried a better layout, something. Now, does the camera pick up from here to show? This- Okay. All right. It would be like this because this would be south, okay? We've got Cass Street here, we've got Albion Street here, we've got Dirumpel Street here, okay? This is the layout of the park from Cass Street all the way down to the river, the Kalamazoo River, that runs along the bottom below Michigan Street. And that whole top part up by Cass Street, I've done in red because it's the little kids' park. This is where the ages, say, one-year-old to six, to six or seven-year-old, this is their area up here. Over here, we're going to have a walking course for both parents and children, so parents can walk the outside while the kids are walking the inside in a children's garden. And down from there, already on the park is a small pavilion. Under that pavilion, you can sit at least six tables. And that would be like something small for, you couldn't, not enough room there to picnic, but if you wanted to have a little study group, or we've been talking with Jess about doing reading there with the project that she's doing, and, or if there was something else that you wanted to do in a small group area, that would be a good place to do it. Then, we are having game tables set out, game tables that have four seats to them, so it's not a whole lot of people maybe want to get a bid or cards or checkers or something like that. There's going to be tables around for that because we're right across the street from the senior citizens' building. And I've often said, my dad, as he got older, he liked to sit him and his buddies and play checkers. And so, four of them would get together, or two of them would get together, and they would play checkers. So, we thought with our seniors being across the way there, some of them might like to do it. Or if they didn't want to play checkers, they could just sit and read a book, all right? Then we've got, up here by the walk, we're going to have an acknowledgement board. And on this acknowledgement board, we're going to have all the people who have donated to help to make this park, because this park is a $250,000 project. And so far, we're doing pretty good on getting that $250,000. So, we got $35,000 from fire keepers, we have $20,000 from Mrs. Showpiss's group, and we've got some more things to see that we're doing. In fact, she's going to also help us do a, the grant to the Heritage Foundation to get some more funding, because we'd like to cut like a three-year project down to a year, year, year and a half. I think we can do that. Then we go on down that round circle right in the middle of there is going to be History Hill, and at that circle is where we're going to display the history of that area at that time. And Dr. Dick has been very instrumental in that because he's got a class that every year he takes down there, and that's where his class starts teaching about that area because at one point in time, that was a very famous area in Albion. You had Gale Manufacturing across the street, you had Albion, Hayes Albion, well, it wasn't Hayes Albion, then it was Albion, Mallard Iron. On down the way, you had the Indians traveling the river, the Kalamazoo River down along there and stopping there in that area. So, it was a lot that was going on there. And then after, and in this, here you also had, first school was a German school, and after the African-Americans started coming up from the south, the Germans started moving out, the African-Americans took this school, but the school was rundown. It needed a lot of care that wasn't getting, so they decided, Mr. Holland, who was on the city council, decided to start a campaign to have the school removed, and since then, it's just been a vacant piece of land. At that time, they had built two new schools, Dirumpel School and Crowell School. So, the children from that area then started to go to those schools. I went to Dirumpel School, I never went to West Ward. But then, as we go on down here, over on the Albion Street, down from the senior center right across here, is going to be, that fenced-in part is going to be a senior exercise area. And we have taken books and we have chosen some very nice equipment to go in that senior exercise area, and I think they're going to like it. Since I'm retired, I guess I'm senior. So, I might even get to go there and play a little bit myself. I'd rather be over here in the red area with the little kids, so. Then we've got the bathroom, we're going to have benches out here. Mr. Washington is going to redo the pictures on the, around the bathroom and the storage area because someone defaced them, but we're going to get that back up again because it's some of the teachers that taught there when it was an African-American school there. Over here, we also have game tables and we have the teen area. Now, you don't find many parks that have a teen area. This is going to have a teen area where it's going to have workout, exercise stuff that's going to be in the teen area, and it's going to be there year-round. And all of this stuff is going to be stable right there. Down below there, we've got basketball courts and across the Michigan Street, which is, we're hoping is going to be closed off so it'll be safe for kids crossing back and forth, we're going to have, here's the other basketball courts, and down here at the end, after you cross Michigan Street by Albion, we're going to have a parking lot. Over here, on the side where Dirumpel School is, right there is that where Bethel Baptist Church, as you come over, it's going to be the large pavilion, and that's going to be one that will hold 20 large picnic tables. So, it's going to be a nice spot for people to have families, students, or the school to come instead of going out of town and with, you know, at the end of school. There'll be a place where they can come and have a picnic area, a play area, and all of it's just right in one place, and I think it's going to be very well supervised. Then, right here above there, there was a parking lot over there that we made a handicap for the senior citizens because it's right on their side. The big parking lot for everybody else is down here. This parking lot, we're just keeping because you've got the pavilion right below it, and this might be a place where you could have entertainment if you had something going on or you had a little band there, or you could have a little play going on, you've got your tables and things down here so that you could see it. I think that's going to work out really nice. We get more and more suggestions from people. And then around through the park is going to be reading boxes. They're going to be on poles and they're going to be like little houses to where you can go, open it up, take a book out, read it, put it back in. So, those reading boxes are going to be all, there's going to be five of them, I think it was, she said five, around in the park, some for adults, some for children. And, oh. Also talking to Amy, she had asked about having a canoe livery set in down here. Now, I've been talking with John about that and John is suggesting that we move it over to the other side of the street. He said it's a better place to do it. And she is writing a grant to see if we can get money to also have a canoe livery put in down. Couldn't be put in, I understand, up here because you couldn't get under the bridge. So, it's got to be put in down that way, so. Anyway, there's some more things to check on that. We've also been asked to put in the water area, and we've got a couple of places picked out that the water area could probably go in. We're working on it too because at the time, we did the writing of the funding for this, we hadn't included that, but I'm sure we have some very intelligent people who can write more grants and pick the money for that. But anyway, so far, it's moving along very good. You know, I said before the end of the year, if there was anybody who had some money that they wanted to give at the end of the year, throw into here, and I understand that we have had some who have sent in some checks to go towards this. Festival of Forks, we were out and we got some donations at our booth that are going into this too. So, if there's anyone I'm like you now that's got some money that they want to get rid of, please just bring it right down here and Tom Mead will take it for the Holland Park. So, thank you very much, and we do appreciate your $20,000.
Thank you, Lynn.
Can we ask a question? Oh, geez. I would like to ask, it seems as though you're still talking about your designing and planning stage. Has there been any input or surveys from the Forks senior citizens on some things that they might like?
They're working with us.
The neighborhood residents in the area, have they had any input on what they might like?
Haven't talked to the neighborhood residents. Well, we talked to a couple of the churches down there, but the Forks senior citizens, I've been working with the director, and she, in fact, she's the one that's helping us, she's preparing the visual arts part of the grant that's going to go into the Heritage Foundation. They're very happy that it's going to be there because that's something, they've got very nice inside equipment, but this is something that in the summertime, or in the springtime, or in the fall, whenever it is, that the weather's nice, that they want to get out and do something outside, they can come right across the street. And plus, she was also saying that where they were, they had access to children, you know, and they could read stories, children, the children were around over at Crowell School, but here, there's none there. So, this will also give them opportunity. We've got more things going besides just the play part of the park, because there's going to be a lot of group things that's going to be done with young people there in the park that's, that will also, you know, be with the senior citizens, because she and I have been talking about the books and the book boxes and how they can read to children who would like someone to read to them. Parents don't always have that time. And a lot of different things are going to be happening.
Thank you very much. Yes, sure.
Nothing's going to change with the basketball courts, is that right?
They're, across Michigan Avenue, the bigger one is, it'll be there, and then on this side, there's another one. So, the basketball courts will still be there, but there's plenty of room for them to stay, just like they are.
Okay, and as far as Michigan Street, closing Michigan Street, there are no houses that that would interfere with?
There are no houses from Dirumpel Street going back towards Eden Street, there are. But there's also a street that goes up and around to where they can come back down Washington or they can, there's nothing that's going to block them there.
I was going to say, that's not going to be a problem for anyone. All right, thanks.
No more questions? We'll go to Eve with the recreation update and announcement. Cheryl?
Yes, I would like to ask Torian Wilson to approach, and in case you have not heard already, Mr. Wilson has this tremendous new career opportunity with Jackson College, and so, he has submitted his resignation, which I reluctantly accepted. But as part of what I wanted him to do was to give an overview of what's been going on with recreation, because he's done some phenomenal things, including some new initiatives and programs, as well as instituting some great partnerships with some of our local other entities, including the school district and the college. So, I just wanted him to have an opportunity to provide a highlight of some of these achievements.
Thank you so much for the introduction, and I do have a brief status report that I can pass around to the council that you can see something, but, you know.
Thank you.
Lynn is over there, so make sure she gets the-
Is the heat on? The heat?
Thanks, Tori.
Heat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll go through it briefly. I'm sure you have the opportunity to read some of it, and the first portion of it is the executive summary, and it goes through the five-year plan, and it gives the direction of the five-year plan, and it speaks towards the five-year plan being citizen-led, and that was based before my time here, it was established in 2011, and it was established through the old recreation department in addition to some citizen input. And it also speaks towards the development of an advisory committee in which I think is really important because of the new militia's coming. In addition to my time here as the recreation director, it was difficult to lead it all by myself, and so, those would be some of my recommendations toward the end that you'll see. The department has one full-time employee, which is the director, and also has two full-time, part-time positions, and that is Mr. John Condon that's here today, and it is also Mrs. Tamara Lane who's also here today, so, thank you. They were bit by the bug to come to the council, so I'm happy they're here. And also, I'd like to say our staff also have had their evaluations, their annual evaluations, and it was a pleasure to go through that with them, and they all passed full eye and color, so they were satisfactory and I just wished them the best in the future. The department also manages a fleet of vehicles. There's three vans and there's also one pickup truck, and we utilize them a lot to service people within the community in addition to program for activities. The department aims for 2014- The department aims for 2014 were to develop comprehensive programming, develop infrastructure, retain existing grant money, and develop local, regional, and statewide partnerships for recreational activities. And I believe that we were very successful with doing all of those things. As the, as I continue to talk, we're also gonna play the slideshow. When we play the slideshow, everything, you know, once it pops, everything, I believe, starts with the city. So we did everything in mind with what was best for the city based on needs. And so, once it comes up, it will come, there we go. And then we have a live slideshow and then you can see them yourselves. Adult softball, we had a chess club that was also in the works with the, with the Forks Senior Center. We also had fitness, we did boot camp, some things that were non-traditional. Our Easter egg hunt was amazing. And then we also had the daddy-daughter dance. And you'll also see a spin-off to the daddy-daughter dance with the mother, the mother, the mother-son event, which was equally impressive, if not more, because we went from forty, forty-five families to sixty-three families with that event. So, youth baseball was amazing, was the first time that we had three levels. And we went from, we had fourteen U, twelve U, and also ten U. Our Summer Dreams and P-Pots program was, was amazing. We retained students from start till finish. And we also had to kinda turn some people away the last day because financially it wasn't, we shouldn't have had to charge. So, we just, it was great. And you see, it was a lot of fun, nature center, a lot of collaboration with Albion College and the schools in order to make that happen. We have a learning swim program. We also had T-ball, which was increased from three teams to four teams in one year. Our summer youth basketball program at Holland Park was groundbreaking just because we were able to utilize all three courts in order to service people. And it also allowed for us to connect with different people on I-94, Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, and Jackson in order to establish programming, such as the Kalamazoo team there, to establish programming and be the leaders of recreational basketball within lower Michigan. So, we were very, very proud of that program. And it just wasn't about basketball, it really was bigger than that, as you'll see, it comes up. Had an opportunity to network with people that were, that grew up here. We had the opportunity to honor some of our community heroes, such as Ms. Lyas, Councilmember Barnes, Coach Davis, and also, and also Noah Smith. We were able to connect with the Police Department in order to provide services for our event. And we also had a lot of community support. One of the things I was big on was giving back to the community. And then, and we didn't ask for anything, we just wanted the opportunity. And this is our cheerleading program, which gave us an opportunity to provide programming solely for girls in Albion. A lot of the times, we provided programming, you know, and boys dominated because they're, they're so sports-centered. But we also needed to provide opportunities for the young ladies too. And it was amazing, it was beyond beautiful. And we had a lot of help with that. And so this is our junior varsity program, Councilmember Barnes led that. And we also had a very successful season there. We had a flag football program in which we promised to deliver. In my first year, I said, you know what, we need to do something for the little kids. And we provided that program for them. Again, a lot of help within the community, it just was not about me. But it also gave us the opportunity to provide non-contact sports to our kids within the community. And now we have the alignment necessary to provide that football for, for everyone. Academic support was, was important for us as well. We had a study table before our major sport events, such as, such as football, such as basketball. We had the most participants and we had an opportunity to reinforce academics with our students. And again, we had an opportunity to participate in some of the community events such as the night parade. It was really cold, but we still did it. The mother-son dance, it was the first time that that's happened, I believe, in eight to ten years. And it was amazing, look at Tamara. So, okay, John, you know, we all chipped in, we all played a part in it, and everyone left there happy. And isn't that what it's all about? We also provided adult flag football, in which we had five teams that participated in our initial year. And we, it was only going to grow. And everyone was in line, it was, it went well, and we hope that it would have grown. This is our Madden Challenge, you know, don't leave the gamers out. We thought that even though playing a video game is sitting down, it also allows for you to, to learn more about the sport and strategize. So, we thought that was equally important. This is our adult night court league, in which the schools provided us the opportunity to do the league at, in their facilities, and it was a hit. It was beyond a hit. It was so huge that the Michigan Recreation and Parks Association was looking to have us host a state championship tournament here. And so, it, it was that big. And again, we had the opportunity to reshape how people viewed basketball. How powerful is that? If you can reshape it just through activity, isn't that what it's all about? So it gave us an opportunity. The adult or the youth basketball program was amazing. And we had over ninety kids that participated in the youth program. And it, it was about one goal, it's about one passion, and it's about having one opportunity to do something for everyone. And that was huge. And our program was, was beyond successful. And again, going back, we did some youth basketball clinics. And we just felt that, don't shy away from basketball. We also gave back to the community with gifts, give for the rec of it. This was a toy drive that was spearheaded through Dollar General and also within the Recreation Department. And a lot of people within the community gave back. And we just thought that it was amazing to do some things in the community that was about giving back. And that was, in my tenure as the Director of Recreation, when I first sat here, you know, and my mother was here and a lot of people from the community was here, I said I'll do some quirky things, but also, also give the energy, also give the effort. And I promise you, I did not have gray hair before I started. And now I have a little bit, so I just feel like I've earned my stripes a little bit. The infrastructure, if you look at the executive report, the infrastructure, we, in 2014, the City of Albion Recreation Department developed infrastructure to allow recreational services to be delivered to citizens of Albion and the surrounding communities more efficiently and provide cost savings to the department. When we, when we provided the website to the community, it also, the kickback was that our recreational staff did not have to work so hard on some of the programming. It freed us up to do some other things. So for me, that's cost savings. Because when you have your recreational director doing all the programming, I can't get out and do some of the director's work. And so it freed us up. So that's where the cost saving come in. It's, it's very difficult to put a number on that, but it is, it is there. The website was created through rec desks that allow for online processing and payment to be made through, made, made for recreational programs. The website also has the ability to generate reports and develop programs within minutes. And so that's why it gave us the opportunity to crank out those programs. And our programs are grants. In 2014, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents in local grants and private contributions were provided to the Albion Recreation Department. The department successfully generated more funding than originally budgeted for. So, in our initial, we thought that we could, we can get about twenty thousand dollars. And we went above and beyond. And, and we were very, very pleased with the people that supported us with that programming. In 2014, the Albion Recreation Department offered forty-nine programs. If you look on the back, there's an appendix. And there, it shows you thirty-five programs, but within those thirty-five programs, there were subprograms. For example, within the youth baseball program, it was really three programs. It was a ten-U program, a twelve-U program, and a fourteen-U program. So that's where you get the forty-nine programs. And that was, that was amazing for us to, to do all that with short staff. But, we had a lot of long nights, but we, we managed to pull it off. And again, it's about the staff and about the people that supported it, and the volunteers, not necessarily always me. The partnerships, the partnerships are critical for success and sustainability of the Albion Recreation Department due to the lack of recreational facility, reduction in funds to operate the department, and reduction of citizens within the city of Albion. Therefore, utilizing the entity, the entity's facilities, gaining support for grant opportunities from outside entities, and attracting participants from surrounding communities are important for successful programming for the city of Albion. It may not be that way for other people, but for here in Albion, we need to really rally around each other in order to make our programs happen. Albion College, Albion Public Schools, Forks Senior Center, New Level Sports of Battle Creek, Jackson College, Schuler Arts, Oakland Hospital, Williston Juris Sec, Michigan Works, Goodwill Industries, Orchard Service, Orchard Children Services, Dollar General, Peep's Hut of Albion, Harvey Howie's of Albion, Philanthropic Women of Albion, Albion Homer United Way, Albion Community Foundation, Albion Chamber of Commerce, Double Vision Center, Kalamazoo Boys and Girls Club, and College Lanes or University Lanes all contribute, contributed to the success of the Albion Recreation Department in 2014. So when I say that it really was not about me, it, it really was just not about me. It was about everyone coming together, collaborating, and developing those partnerships in order to make it work. And in my first year, I was laying the foundation of it. It wasn't the end product, it was just the start. We were gaining momentum. And so I'm very, very happy with all the partnerships that happened as a result of the staff here with our Recreation Department and the community. And then it also talks more about some, some things that happened within the department. But I believe what's important is the conclusion in the recommendations. Under new leadership in 2014, was, 2014 was a transition year for the Albion Recreation Department. Remember, I took the job halfway through. So 2014 was really my first year. And so, I learned the lay of the land, as former Recreation Department Rob Ferguson would say. Hey, learn the lay of the land. The Recreation Department transitioned from a youth-based program to a more inclusive program. We added more, we added more from ages zero to four, and we also added more with the adults. And so, the philosophy was, we'll add more with our existing programs and then we would diversify our programs in year two. So, there was a need for an update of the existing city website and establish online registration and payment for recreational activities. The department was on pace for ending the year with a positive balance. Before, we was informed late in the year that some tax money did not come in. And I, I had to say that because the, probably the biggest part as a director is being fiscally responsible. And so, when, when I found out that we was behind the budget, that, that was really a blow. And it was, you couldn't predict it. We couldn't predict that some people, some businesses would, would leave our city and leave us with a deficit. So, we were really on pace to be positive. And so I, I would like to illustrate that point. It did not happen, but there's also plans in 2015 to collaborate with more entities in Albion to offset that. So, I'm really happy with that. There are two grants that are currently in the status of open and require an evaluation for the year 2015. And in my transition, I also provide that information to help out with that. The Albion Storage Unit has also transferred from the, from the Eden Street and we're in the process of transitioning here to City Hall. So all of those things are some new big, new beginnings. Recommendations for the city, based on this report, is with the declining budget, is recommended that the City of Albion Recreation Department look for additional funding. And, you know, that may seem novice, but you have to secure the funding that we already have and then have to go beyond. So, the next Recreation Director definitely would, would have to look towards that. And also, programmatic budgeting, you know, how many dollars is needed for each event? And that is one thing that our, our leader, our city manager, has been very, very, has stressed a lot. And I just, you know, love what you're doing. The, and then another thing is to develop a recreational advisory committee for 2015 and also develop a millage committee for 2015. Those are two things that Councilmember Barnes was really strong on and really stressed. And I hope that that happens for 2015 because, I wanna stress this again, no one person can do it on their own. It's just, it's just, we were able to manage and we were able to grow some programs because I had some really, really awesome people supporting me as a staff. So, I wanna conclude by saying, thanks for the opportunity within the city of Albion to be the Recreation Director. And I didn't know that the job would be my childhood dream, but I always knew I wanted to give back. And, and I always was good at programming, I was always good at athletics, and I was always good at working with people, and then just having a good heart. And this gave me the opportunity to put it all together and give back to my community. I couldn't ask for anything better. You know, Albion is still my heart, always will be, and, and my parents live here, I'll always be here. But it's important for me to look at some different opportunities as well in my life. And I thank you guys for the opportunity to service the community. Is there, is there any questions from the council?
I just have a statement, I wanna thank you for coming to Albion and working in the capacity that you did because you did make a difference. I worked with the kids on a daily basis and they still call you Coach Tori. It was a wonderful thing you did this summer, bringing the community together, including Albion Public Safety and other citizens to the park. It was just paramount, and we wanna thank you for helping us that beginning. This is a wonderful report. It's a great template for us to use to move forward. And just, just thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. F, with approval of the revised paid time off proposal as online in the letter of the understanding between the City of Albion and the Police Officers Association of Michigan as part of the collective bargaining agreement effective January first, 2015.
Yes, just to give you an update, all of the, the labor agreements have been approved and signed relative to the Police Officers Association of Michigan, POAM. If you recall, that we needed to work out how we wanted to address the paid time off as their, part of their benefit package. So we came to this agreement, which is outlined within this letter of understanding. And in summary, we realigned how their current seniority is allocated based on the hours. For all of the other seniority-based benefits, we were using the one through five, six through fourteen, and fifteen-plus years. So we aligned it to be similar to all of the other benefits in terms of that. We also increased the number of PTO hours. Generally, when you see paid time off, it's, it's considered a combination of the sick time as well as their vacation time. So it's just one pool of availability of hours to the individual employee. But when you do that, typically, what you'll find is the number of PTO hours are essentially the same that you would have received had you had sick time and vacation time. And that wasn't the case with how this was initially instituted. So we tried to bring that more in line. It's still not exactly that dollar amount. We compromised and came to a mutually acceptable amount of total hours based on their years of seniority. Also, we changed the amount of the maximum carryover. One of the key concerns, especially with the newer hires, was that they did not have anything relative to their short-term disability. So, and because they weren't able to bank the hours essentially over one week, what we are allowing with this new proposal is that they are able to bank up to eighty-four hours each year. So at the end of ten years, I think it's ten years. Okay, they'll end up with a bank of, was it four hundred and eighty hours? So that will allow them to have a bank of time that should some unfortunate incident occur to, to them, that they have some time available to them to be drawing down to receive their, the short, essentially short-term disability equivalent. And another cost-saving measure that was instituted right now, anything over the forty-two hours that they can carry over, they are being paid out on an annual basis. So we're eliminating that, but in its place, for the retirement, they can be allowed to cash out up to two hundred and forty hours maximum. And another component of it is that previously, there was, it was a lack of clarity on when they accrued their PTO time. Was it starting on day one or on their first anniversary? So we just wanted to have some clarity. So it's going to be, their bank will be billed, if you want to call it. On January first of each year, if they start in the middle of the year, it'll be prorated. So that we'll have some clarity relative to how that happens. And if they are also, if they start within the middle of the year, it will be allocated based on a bi-weekly pay basis so that we... But they cannot use that time until they have successfully completed their, I think, their ninety-day period, so. And that's it in a nutshell. The, the union itself has agreed to it and has brought before you for you to consider it improved.
So moves.
Support.
And moved and supported, any further questions? Yes, Cheryl?
Cheryl, the annual payout, as far as retire, not annual, I didn't mean annual. As far as retirement payout, two hundred and forty hours is two hundred and forty hours of PTO time, am I right?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
So nothing's going to change with the other?
Benefits.
Benefits?
No.
And what about our officers that have been here a while? Is nothing going to change with that? Or, I mean, a lot of them already have a lot of accrued time that, you know, will we still have to pay that out at retirement? What I'm asking is, so many cities that recently have been getting into trouble because of the legacy costs. And so I'm wondering, some of our officers that have been here a long time, not that I'm trying to get out of paying them, don't get me wrong. But I'm just wondering, is this like from this day forward? Or will those officers that already have a lot of accrued time, are they going to be paid for that at retirement?
This doesn't affect anyone who's not a PTO-based employee.
Okay.
So it only applies really to the newer?
The newer hires, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Any further questions from council? See done, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Future agenda items. Bill?
As the Board of Review has just completed a December session, I'd like a report of that Board of Review sometime in the next month or so, so we could see what the status is, what's happening, and get another idea of where our taxes are at for the city.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
Would the assessor come in with that?
Yes, you need that.
That'd be good, introduce.
And our goal session? Yeah, a date for the goal session and maybe even a discussion of goals.
Yes. I would like to make an agenda item for the city boards to be responsible for PDF minutes to the city clerk and making quarterly reports to city council.
That probably could be part of the goal thing. So it'd be something that we could do as a policy.
That was received, that was an agenda item, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, right now, and we're all here for H., motion to excuse. We don't have to do that, but I would like to fill that in real quick with Cheryl to mention the two millages that are coming forth with the packet that she gave you, just a brief, if you would, please.
As you heard from Mr. Wilson, in regards to the recreation in particular, the importance of having the consistent base of funding to provide these exceptional programs for all of our residents, including the seniors. So what we have before us in two thousand and fifteen is the renewal for the recreation millage of one-point-five mills as well as the street improvement millage, which would probably more than anything is the number-one concern I hear from residents is the condition of our roads. So those are two things that we need to move on relatively quickly. We do have an opportunity to put it on a May election, May ballot. In order to do that, we'll need to bring the language before the city council in February. So what I've already started working with a number of community residents, including Harry Bonner, is to create a stakeholders group. We're planning to meet next week to just go over, you know, what are our intentions and our roles and our goals and to bring that recommendation to the mayor and city council for you to vote on, putting that on the May ballot. Also relative to recreation, I don't plan on filling the director's position immediately. Trying to find some interim approaches until we can work out the details. This is a great opportunity to look at what framework best fits within our abilities, but while we are still servicing our residents. So those conversations are being initiated and will be held.
Yes.
With respect to that, is there any conversation about making that mill not three, but something more? Like five?
And just in line with this conversation, is that the same election that the state road millage is going to be on? Okay.
That's why we're looking at?
This information has to be into the county no later than the tenth of February.
Right, no, I get that.
So that's why we have to move on to it.
No, I understand that, but I mean, we can have a, maybe we add this to our discussion on the next council meeting about whether we set that level at more than three.
Which will have to be a decision that'll be made, that'll be, I'm assuming, a part of the conversation with the community stakeholders that we try to bring together. On one, well, obviously there's a need, but do we really think it can be supported by the residents? If, you know, if it doesn't make sense?
Right.
Try to put something out there for it to fail, but what do we think is reasonable and can be accommodated? But the initial recommendation is looking at a renewal.
Right.
A different conversation takes place, that'll be your choice.
Yes, Cheryl.
I think one of the, Councilmember Wheaton brought up the fact that, I think we have to, I would like to see, what percentage of taxes right now are we really collecting? Because we can work very hard to get a five percent increase or a five-mill increase and then find out it's not going to do us that much good. So I think that, I'd like a little bit more information on what the current tax collection rate is.
It's over ninety-four percent.
Yeah.
I think we saw a number.
Yeah.
Early in our budgeting process, and it's way over ninety percent, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like a dollar figure.
Right, no, no, I get that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'd like a dollar figure.
I just wanted, you know, Cheryl, to bring that to your attention and let you know that this is coming up, and it's, we're not trying to rush it. It's what the county is doing to us if we want to get this on the May ballot, you know, so.
Now, do we want the rec department millage on the May ballot as well?
They're both going to be.
Both.
The rec and the street millage will be on the May ballot, so. And what we're shooting for at this point is just a renewal, so.
Okay.
That's what the committee and everything will do. Yes, Cheryl?
What else is going to be on the May ballot? There's going to be the roads as far as the state goes.
Sales tax.
And sales tax with that.
That's the purpose of the May.
The purpose, okay, so other than that, though, on the May, right now on May?
We haven't heard any more.
I haven't heard any more.
So it looks like that's all it's going to be, all right, thank you.
So if there is no further more discussion, we just wanted to keep you abreast of what was going on there. I'll turn it over to citizens' comments. Person addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please come forward with your name and address, please.
My name is LaRose J. Bradley. I live at three-twelve Arthur Street in Albion, Michigan. And I'm here basically in representation for Ann Kemp for the Albion Housing Commission. Ann is recovering from surgery and could not be here. Evidently, there were some questions about appointments to boards that we were not really up on, and I need some help in understanding. I want you to know this, and I'm getting kind of relaxed, and I won't run over five minutes. But a couple months ago, I was in Baltimore, Maryland, at a housing commission conference, and I have never been more proud of this little city than when up on the wall, they ran a slide presentation of those people that had been selected across the country because they had written an essay on what my home means to me. And one of the young women, I think she's eleven years old, that lives here, took second place.
Wow.
A little city like Albion, that we could be recognized. And she felt that where she lived was important. And I wanted to basically just say, I'm on the board and have been for, this is my third term. I want to make this simple and sum it up very nicely. There are a lot of things that go on that we are not privy to until it hits the board or hits the wall, or rumors are circulating, or the city council has been informed, something that even we don't know of. We have a board member that is coming up, I think, for an appointment of another term, and she's been on there quite a few years, she's been diligent, very active, very faithful. And she now suffers with kidney dialysis, so she's slowed down a little bit, but she still makes the meetings, she still travels. She still has a very direct part in the housing commission and what we do. I would like to say this too, also, that for the people, Mayor Domingo, that make applications to the board, it'd be nice sometimes that, if people that were interested in the housing commission, even those that live there, if they're interested in how it's ran, you should at least attend a board meeting once in a while. Or you should be involved in what is going down. When we hear that you want to be on the board and we've never seen you, you've never come, you've never inquired, it kind of articulates the sensitivities, you know, as to what your reason for wanting to serve is, but I won't go there, that's not mine. I would like to say this about the housing commission and the board. Mrs. Kemp has done an excellent job, an excellent job, and she has total support of the board. And I often say this when on occasion I come here. You tell me, when was the last time you picked up a newspaper and read anything negative about the Albion Housing Commission, okay? They do an excellent job on what they do. Also, when was the last time you picked up a paper and read about the people that were living under the bridges in Albion? Or the, seeing the homeless standing around the street? The housing commission plays a tremendous part in making sure that these problems are met. Ann has been very cooperative, so I often have an expression I use, how do you measure prevention? How do you measure prevention? If it doesn't become obvious, or you're not talking about it in the media, on the newspaper, how do you measure? We have a tremendous association with the police department here, and this goes back from when I was executive director. Police officer Deckett, I never will forget, worked tirelessly to help make sure things were kept under control, and things went all right. We've always had a good relationship with the police department, and we want to keep it that way. Now, we, I'll say this, and then I will take my seat. The housing commission spends a lot of money in training its commissioners because the federal government requires that you know what you're doing. We have been taught that our policy, our place on the board is to make policy and procedure. We make it. We then hire an executive director that does it. We are not there to micromanage her job. If for any reason we find out that the job is not being done, then we have the recourse of the HUD, which keep her feet to the bar. And we have a lot of requirements that we have to meet, but we help her do her job. We don't nitpick, we do not nitpick. We support her, and we support the community. And Mayor Domingo, it's my prayer. I think you've done a great job, and most of the mayors that have set your place as city manager and appointing the board has done an excellent job. If it's not broke, don't fix it, okay? If she has good board members that have been there for her, let her keep them. I'm not saying that at some point in time you don't change, because you do. We all get old, we begin to lose our memory, we can no longer function. But ask Mr. McConnell and Harry Reid how long you can serve, okay? But I just wanted to get up and say, this has been one of the greatest city council meetings I've attended in a long time. I have enjoyed your presentation, and Deckett, it was good to see you back. Sat on the housing commission board with him. And then the young gentleman, he has done an excellent job. We have been blessed, and we have been gifted as a community. Let's just keep it going, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Bearman, one-one-oh-one-six-twenty-nine Mile Road, Albion. It's hard to follow that. But anyway, what I wanted to do is get up today and congratulate and thank all of you for being on the Albean City Council, because this is the first meeting of the year, right? And it's, even though a lot of people weren't challenged in the elections, you all came through it and are all doing a great job. And you got to keep giving honors to like the Recreation Director and other people because this town is a good town, and that's where we're at. I get sworn in on Thursday as county commissioner, and I'm going to try to make all of your meetings. I'm not going to be able to make the first Monday of the month. I'll make the third Monday of the month, if that's okay with you guys, because I don't like to just show up, talk, and leave. I like to actually hear and listen to what's going on in the communities. Because you can't get a good grip of what's going on unless you actually listen to the public. And that's what I want to do. So, thank you, and I'll have a better report next time because I'll have more going on.
You made a commitment, and I hope you fulfill it because at times, there's been county commissioners for this area that did not show up.
But since I started running for county commission, I think I've been at least once a month to all of your meetings, so. And that's what I'm going to try to do, is try to keep the once a month because it's really hard for, to be in Homer and in Albion at the same time. Thank you. Thank you. Any further?
If I could add one final comment, I again want to thank and applaud Torian Wilson. It has been such a pleasure to work with him. I've never seen such passion and commitment from a recreation director. My background is in working with recreation commissions. And to think of what he's accomplished, he was the only full-time employee in his department. And a lot of that is just based on his pure energy and commitment and wanting to give back to this community. It's a wonderful community, and he has been such a tremendous asset and a thrill to work with. And he'll tell you, I pushed him hard probably than he's ever been pushed before. But I knew when I first met him that, you know, this was the launching pad for him because he has such tremendous talent that someone else was going to pick him up. And I, so I'm just thrilled that he's going to be able to continue to contribute to the recreation field as a professional, and we are very much proud of him.
If there is no more. So I have a motion to adjourn.
So, or?
She's, she moved. She's, she moved before you finished. Cheryl got it.
Did you have some more that I missed?
No, I said so moved.
Before you even got it out.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Cheryl.